City Hall on Tuesday, February the 11th, beginning at three oh three. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, Councilman Thompson, would you give our invocation?
Certainly. Heavenly Father, be with us today as we do the city's work, try to take care of the citizens of this great city. Watch over all of our first responders, be with them and their families. Help us make good decisions and be cohesive in what we're trying to achieve. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, let's get our meeting with item number three, discussing proposals to restrict mobile housing to designated MH zoning areas. Liz, how are you?
Hi, good. Yourself? So, uh, today, we'll be talking about updating, um, the mobile home, mobile and manufacturer homes zoning. So just so you guys kind of have, uh, an idea what we're going to be talking about, I'm going to first go over some definitions. Then I'm going to go, um, over, um, what our current, uh, housing ordinance is calling for the land use and what's allowed in this specific category. Then I'm going to show you some data of, of our existing fabric in the specific area that, uh, Mr. Mitchell wanted us to look at. Um, then I'm going to give you two options of what we can do. Um, and then we can discuss a little bit more if you guys want to. So I was told that I had to read this, uh, these definitions exactly how they are because I always go off script. So, "A mobile home is a prefabricated residential residence built in a factory and moved to a permanent location. It can either be portable or have a fixed foundation." According to HUD, homes built before, uh, June 15, 1976 are considered mobile homes. "A manufacturer home is a portable dwelling built in a factory that meets federal standards set by HUD codes. It is transported to a permanent site and can be placed on either temporary or permanent foundation." According to HUD, homes built after June 15, 1976 are classified as manufacturer homes. "A modular home is a prefabricated house constructed in sections in a factory, which are then transported and assembled on a permanent foundation at the site. They adhere to the same local building codes as set for built homes. In Odessa, modular homes are considered type of single-family dwellings and allowed in single-family zoning districts." The first two, which is the mobile home and manufacturer home, are the same category. So they're exactly the same. The difference is that before nineteen, June 15, 1976, it was considered mobile home. After that, it became a manufacturer home, but we still use both terminologies. Um, and these can, are considered movable homes. And the modular home will be in a permanent foundation. Any questions so far?
So a manufactured home, you can do it just like a mobile home, you can pick it up and move it away?
Uh, a manufacturer home?
Is that what you just said?
Uh, yes, correct. Remember, the mobile home and manufacturer home, it's the same thing, so consider them equal.
Well, I just thought a manufactured home, once you sit it, it breaks, it's down.
No, you, you can move those. So that's why the, the modular homes are those. And that's where it becomes tricky for a lot of people because you can put them and you can set them in, in a permanent foundation. But they're still classified as a mobile home or a manufacturer home. Any other ones? Okay. So now we're going to move on to the area of interest. Um, and I, here, I just wanted you guys to kind of start seeing the zonings that we're seeing. So we're seeing a mix of different zonings. As I was saying, we were going to be talking about, uh, the types of residential housing in our city, and this is from our zoning ordinance. But the one that we're talking about today is the MH and MHE. So as you can tell, they're allowed in GR. Sorry, probably can't read that far. So GR, MHE, MH, U, which is University, R, Retail, Retail One, Light Commercial, Heavy Commercial, Light Industrial, and Plan Development. Which you don't typically see a lot of these in like the commercial aspect, you only tend to see it. But just how our zoning was written, it was all of the above, kind of. Uh, and so it just got carried on, um, into continuing that pattern. And that's why you, you have what you're seeing today, which is the mixture of everything everywhere throughout our whole city. Again, this is just to emphasize on the dwelling. So now we're going to start breaking it in. So we obviously knew that we didn't want to look at the SF, that single-family housing. So the only, um, housing from the three categories that we can put in there would be the mobile home. But, sorry, the modular home. Okay, so this is, uh, the study area, the boundary. So in the boundary, we're looking at 3,070, um, homes. Out of those, in this area, we're looking at 746 mobile homes and, uh, 2,324 single-family dwellings. Now we go into the overlay. This is where we really wanted to see this mixture of the zonings and I'd start identifying what we're starting to see in here. So the zonings that are, are here is going to be GR, MH, R, LI, LC, and FD. So in the overlay district, we're seeing a total of 1,244 houses. In mobile homes, we're seeing 522. And single-family dwellings, we're seeing, uh, 692. What's very interesting about this is that we're at a total of a 42% of mobile homes when you're just looking at the lots that are residential. So you're pretty close to having, uh, them almost equal. Um, when we're looking just at the SF, we are seeing that there's a hundred, there's 1,722 homes in total. We have 191 that are mobile home, and then we have 1,531 single-family dwellings. We couldn't pinpoint, um, when those mobile homes were brought in. We would have to do 191 studies of these properties to see when they came in. We believe that they came in when we annexed into the city. Um, and that's why they're in the locations that they are. Or, you know, it happens, people can place a mobile home, we don't get a permit for it, so. Um, so in the overlay district, we did identify that we have 577 vacant lots. So that means that you do have a possibility of adding another 577 mobile homes. Well, we also, yeah.
Is this just the area that I put in, right? We just talked about.
Yes, the area that you were, yes. So you'll see towards the end, I'm going to touch the whole, uh, city. Um, but I'll get to that one in a little bit. So we also wanted to look at, okay, what is really happening in this area? What are we seeing as construction? So for new construction from January 1st of 2024 to December 31st of 2024, we saw in the study area 11 new, um, residential permits. In this overlay district, we only saw six. For new construction for mobile homes, we saw, uh, a total of 17 new permits for the same date, and we saw none in the, um, SF area. So here where we're going to start talking about your conditions of what we can do in order to.
Actually, Liz, can we?
Yeah.
Go back a step?
Sure.
So if you're bringing in, uh, manufactured home, are the requirements the same as if you were building a house for your infrastructure? Are you going to have to have the same water, the same sewer, the same sidewalk, the same? I mean, what, what Billy Cleaver is going to have to do to build a house is, fill in the blank, going to have to do to?
So it all will depend on certain things. So if the property is already platted, that means that infrastructure is already there. Um, but we do have certain areas in where we do not have the connections to the water and sewer because, um, you, the roads have not been completed. They've been identified that there's roads that are going to be there, but it's something that still needs to be built out, and that will be to the developer. So it depends on where you are on the block. If you're the furthest one and there's no developments in front of you, you're responsible for bringing those lines all the way to your property. And then if somebody else comes, then they'll end up having to. I think in some of them, there's like a pro-data, um, kind of, uh, system going on for them. Um, I'm not sure Joe's here, but he probably would be able to elaborate a little bit more on that. Um, then with the cost of how you're, the, when you're talking about foundation, for a mobile home, you, you don't have to have a foundation for it. So, um, it's just getting what, with Gary's department and making sure that they're tying it down correctly, basically. Um, I don't think they have to prep the land for anything else, right? It's just that. Yeah. So, um.
One thing that, that, you're doing a great job, but one thing that, that I'm looking at, mobile homes versus a stick-built house. I got fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in the foundation. They got a couple of tie straps.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a big, big difference. When I go to permit it, when I permit a house, I got two to three thousand dollars filed up in the permit. I'm pretty sure they don't, they don't have that type of permitting on the mobile home.
Yep, they're just paying for the permit to tie them down, basically. And connections, you know, water and sewer and that kind of stuff. Um, then, um, I don't know if you want to talk about this, you know, it, there's.
Thanks, Dallas, we'll see you. Schools has to go back to school.
Hey, but I, I know we're talking something, and I know I'm the one who brought all this up. But here's my problem. I don't have a problem with mobile homes. People want to buy a mobile home, that's their business. Here's the problem. What's, what's the little addition homes they built, little six homes? Is it on Fitz?
That's Fitz.
Fitz.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the address, but that's Fitz.
What is the, they built like six or seven homes on it? Okay, you built nice homes, but then you put six mobile homes on this side, three mobile homes. What good does that do to commu, I mean, what does, what does that bring my neighborhood up? Why would you build homes and then allow ten mobile homes to cover up all the houses?
They were already there.
Yeah.
You know?
They were already there. That, that property we gave to the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, they built.
No, no, those mobile homes were not there. I've been living there 25 years, and we're not going to get into that.
We're on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
We have another block down.
But I'm just, even that, why do we build nice homes and we allow people to build mobile homes? Why do we allow that? If we don't want to bring up our community?
Right now, it's because our zoning allows that. That's, that's the reason why, right now. And that's why we're here, to discuss different options of what we can do and still allow mobile homes in certain areas.
I mean, like the Henley addition. Was that 100 homes? Baby? 100 homes in the Henley addition. If we had kept building that neighborhood like that, would have been a nice neighborhood. Still a nice neighborhood. But we had kept building like the Henley addition, it would have been just like 87th Street and stuff like that out there. Would have been a nice neighborhood. You know? But we bring in that, the mobile homes, a lot of people don't want to move there because the mobile homes.
Liz, you have some solutions for us?
And I'm not saying we got to take it out to the city of Odessa. There's plenty of other land that we could move mobile homes to, but I just, we, we want to build that neighborhood.
Yeah. And that, before I go into the options, I wanted to state something. We have a lot of people that purchase mobile homes that are not allowed to be placed on the site because they have to be, by, by now, remember how we were talking about the two types of, uh, mobile homes and manufacturer homes? So if they don't get it, at least with the HUD recognition, because that's what, that's, that's why that, the, the date change is because at that time, they now had to comply to fire regulations and certain, uh, construction codes. If they don't have that, they're not allowed to be placed inside city limits. So we have a lot of people that will buy them and they don't have that certification, and then they cannot even place them in the property. So, um, it creates a lot of hardships for those that did end up buying them.
So, so you're saying that, is it in 76 and they changed those from, from mobile homes to manufactured homes? The manufactured home has more, uh, protection against fire and so forth?
Correct.
And that's what makes the difference in the two?
Yes, and that's why we don't allow for the ones.
It's not how it's secured, whether it's permanent or, or not, it's the way it's built.
Yes.
That's the difference. Just making sure.
Okay, so let's go now to the options. So option one would be to create an overlay zoning. That would remove the mobile home, manufacturer homes as allowed use just in that area that we're talking about, which is right in front of you guys. Um, but would still be allowed in the zonings of GR, U, R, R1, LC, HC, PD, or LI, all throughout the city. Um, in order for us to do this, we would have to send out, um, notices to every property owner in the overlay area and in addition to the 200 buffer. Um, that would be at the city's expense, and we would have to put, uh, um, not only send out the mail-out notice, but also do, um, noticing in the OA. So we calculated, thanks to our GIS department, with, and all of this maps and everything, GIS helped me do all of that. We have 6,591 lots in that area, and that includes the buffer as well. And we, we have to send out not only the notice, but a return so they can give us comments, uh, if they're for it, they're against it. Um, it allows them to do it, so we send out the, uh, ready stamp for them to be able to return it. So that's why you're seeing a $1.25 cost for that. So that brings us, just for the mailing, it's 8,238 with 75 cents. Plus the OA, I just went a little bit higher to a thousand because it charged based on the wording for us. Um, however, uh, even if we do this, all of the mobile homes that are in this area would still be considered legal non-conforming. So that means they can still stay there as long as they want. Um, if, um, they want, if hypothetically, they abandon the mobile home for the next six months, then they would, uh, have to comply to the new code.
How do you keep up with that?
So, that's a great question.
I called, uh, mobile home's been gone about three months. Talked to Gary about it the other day, and they just left their trash. But somebody went by and picked it up. I don't know if it was code enforcement had it picked up, or Gary said he didn't do it. Somebody, a tractor picked it up, because you could see it. So how do you keep up with that?
So that would be that they disconnected their, from the water bill. That's the only way that we would be able to, uh, identify them. Um, and then that doesn't mean that they, um, the owners, you know, you have the tenant, they're the ones that come and they request their water bill, but the owner of the property can all keep it active, so they can, so we have to see those two, making sure that they're not doing it. That it's really vacant. If there's, um, you know, damage to it and up to 60%, they can fix it and they can still leave it there. However, there's a fire and it's 100% gone, they can't put it back in there and they would have to comply to the new code. Um, and that's pretty much the section that I kind of jumped through. So if they would, uh, even though they, they are still allowed, they still will have to go to the ZBA board. So we still have a board that will have a say on it, but based on laws, they still are allowed to go in there. This is more if, like hardship or something like that, they're trying, like, if there was a fire and they really had a really case, that would be something that would be an exception that the ZBA might be able to say yes or no. So now, oops, so now let's go to option two. So remember how I said we're only looking with the first one, the overlay district? It's just for that area, so everywhere else, you would still be able to have mobile homes or manufacturer homes. So this is looking at the whole zoning and just leaving them in the, um, MH and MHE zoning. So that would require us, again, to be sending notices to all the property owners in where we're taking that rights away from them. So it would be the GR, the U, the R, R1, LC, HC, LI, or PD. So now we're looking at 9,762, uh, lots. Um, again, the cost is 125 per letter. So we're looking at 12,202 with 50 cents plus the thousand for the OA. Again, they were, if they're, um, they would become, the ones that are still in the, in these locations would be legal non-conforming, same rules as the ones from, that I just mentioned. So this is where I wanted to show you guys of how it's being affected throughout the whole city. So everything that you're seeing in color, those are opportunities for them to be able to put a mobile home right now. So it doesn't just go to district, you know, specific district, it hits the whole city. So if hypothetically, somebody wanted to put a mobile home right next to a business, if, and they're in the R1 zoning, they can. Um, and so just wanted you guys to see the bigger picture of how it affects. It doesn't affect just one, the south side, it doesn't affect just the north side, it affects the whole city. Um, I think allowing them to still have, um, MH and MHE zoning where they can still go, it, you know, we're not completely restricting them for not being inside city limits. So the option A, option one and option two, procedures are pretty much the same. Um, we would send out the notice and then, uh, do the mail-its, uh, 16 days before, uh, PNZ. Then we're mailing letters to the owners and, um, that would be 11 days before PNZ. Then we would have PNZ meeting, and then we would, two weeks later, we would be having our first meeting for city council, and then, um, two weeks after that, we would be having our second meeting for city council. And the same goes for option two. Uh, in summary, uh, it's overlay district, we're just touching what's in that, uh, interest boundary. And then if we go with option, uh, two, we're actually addressing the whole city.
You can't just do this one part of town and not address all of it.
Yes, correct.
I'm sorry, Chris, I can barely hear you.
Can you, can you speak up, Chris, please?
I just said, you can't just do one, one side of the city and not do all of it. All of us vote on something up here, so.
Yeah, but you can still cut certain part of your district out. I don't want to cut the whole city out because.
Well, there's, there's places in my district that's got the same thing.
They don't board it unless it's shut down?
I have houses around, and then all of a sudden, they put a mobile home around them.
They don't board it unless it's shut down?
Sorry.
Because I have people really want the whole city. My people that I talk to want the city, mobile homes outside the city. I don't really want to do that because I know people love mobile homes in their areas, but my neighborhood is deteriorating. The city of Odessa let it deteriorate. Not just mobile homes, but old houses that need bulldozers. Okay? So, and, 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 and when they put that Henley addition up, they should have continued rebuilding that area. And that's the area that I've always said, people, that's what they see when they come out that interstate. Let's make, let, let's beautify it a little bit. And, and, and I'm not saying the whole city has to do it, but some cities don't allow them in the city.
Yes.
And I'm not going to go that far because I know people going to raise a little hell about it, so. But if I can keep my area looking nice, I'm okay. I don't have anything to do with anybody else's di, I'm not going to force nobody else's district to do it, but I know what I would like to see in my district.
So neither option, you're not excluding mobile homes, you're just saying they're only allowed in the mobile home.
And I, and you know what? I'm not doing my whole district. And I'm just doing a certain section of the district because one half of my district is 100% mobile home. And I'm not going, and the mayor and Mr. Morton will tell you, they dropping those things anywhere.
Yeah.
They put one on the corner, the other, tore the street up, then come back and fix the street. And it's just sitting there ugly. It, it, it's not even a mobile home lot. But because it was a piece of land and somebody consented, we can make $10 tax money, they threw a mobile home on it. That's what's ugly about the whole situation. Go do things, let's do it the right way.
And I think that's a better part of the conversation, there's a better solution. And I know you and I have talked about the exact same thing down, down for me, you know, two of them popped up out of nowhere. And it's just, how are they allowed to do that? And well, okay, they, they are, but, um, visiting about the HUD designation, I believe, almost makes them as expensive as.
Yes.
You could build with Odessa Housing Finance Corporation or, or others. And so to find the right incentives or, or what, uh, what could the city do to, you know, encourage building? Because, you know, what, what you're saying, my understanding is you put one of these on a lot, your taxable value doesn't increase as if, you know, Mr. Cleaver built a house on the lot. And so I think my, my goal should always be to increase the taxable value of the, the city. So, you know, that's where, that's where I would look to, for guidance on this, is how, what kind of regulations, rules, whatever it is, can we do to help folks, A, get into a better home, but also increase the taxable value of our city?
And I think overall, we're all looking at that to be able to bring, um, alternative housing. Um, and, you know, we have like Dr. Horton and B and Bo that are doing the cottage houses that are more catered for affordable housing. So when you're looking at those cottage houses compared to a mobile home, you're looking at almost the same price. Last time we had, um, someone, uh, tried to put in a mobile home in an SF area, and it did get approved, um, you know, that, she said it cost her $350,000. So you could have bought a house with the same amount of money.
But I, I, again, I'd like to figure out ways, and even back to what you mentioned earlier, if, again, if he's building at the end of the street, he's got to pull the water line all the way to the end of the street. And, you know, Beaton Bo's going to these areas, and I don't know the incentives they're getting, but it, it, building the infrastructure to these infill housings, uh, situations has got to be a lot different than what they're doing up north. And so how, you know, again, I think we've got to kind of research and find ways to lessen the burden on these developers doing these infill housing so that those houses don't cost $350,000 just because you had to pull the, the utilities all the way down the street.
Let me first say, Liz, thank you for a great presentation. I really, I think that was wonderful, thank you. Makes sense to me. Councilman Ham, I was going to ask you, I couldn't tell from your comments earlier, I'm just trying to get a feel for, are we, are we talking about, I mean, I know Eddie obviously is concerned about District One, but are we concerned about, I guess this is the question I'm asking you. Were you concerned about citywide? Is that what you're telling me? I mean, I'm not sure I understood your question.
I mean, I don't know if I make sure I understood you correctly.
I'm just like him, but my district, I got mobile homes popping in. When one of the older houses from the forties goes down, they just slide a mobile home on the lot and call it good. They didn't take care of it the whole time they were there and then they just moved a mobile home into it.
Gotcha.
Which drives my neighborhood, where people are fixing up the houses, it drives the value down in our houses, but really it doesn't drive the value, because they're overrated anyway, because they're that's the way we do stuff. So my house is built in the forties and it's worth two hundred thousand dollars and I just crack up every time I see it, so. Somebody come and buy it from me, I'll give it to you for two hundred thousand. Other than that, they're popping up in between houses.
Yeah.
Into lots. And that should not be allowed.
Anyway, I mean, you you don't see an American front yard with these mobile homes. You know, no nice yard, no, all you see is, I call it mancabs.
Yep.
That's what they look like. Look like mancap. You know, you have, I like having, and I shouldn't have to move out my house, because I like where I live. But, and trust me, my neighbors know I get on, hey, look, water your grass. Make your grass look nice. I I get on all my neighbors. But I'm just saying, with that mobile home, you know, you have a front yard. You know, you have a side yard or backyard for the kids. It's ugly. So that's that's one of my biggest things too. It's, hey, maybe maybe in fifty years, I can have a south side looking, we can build us a country club. You know, it's just a dream, but mobile homes, I I I don't know, I I just, they they don't bring no, they don't beautify your neighborhood. Because it's like Haney saying, they pop up like popcorn. Anywhere.
Right, Eddie, I think we hear your concerns. Go back to a couple of slides, we talked about options.
Yeah.
What it looked like on the.
So this is a summary one, do you want this one, so you can compare them back to back?
Here's what I guess I want to talk, yeah, oh, that one you just.
Oh, sorry. This one?
The one that shows that right there, timeline. If we wanted to, and that's what I'm asking this council, if we wanted to, we could do this citywide, right? You showed me all, you showed me that, the map just now, and I'm hearing a lot of 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 emotion from one councilman and others also feels the same way. So I'm asking, I guess I'm asking for discussion, guys. We know District One wants it, I'm hearing it loud and clear. I think I hear the Councilman Stoker saying, I'd like for it to all be all city. I guess the question is, is that something we want to explore?
I think it should be citywide, but Liz, I had a question for you. You've been working on this for many nights and sleeping on it. So as option one and option two, just from development, what is your opinion for the best resolve for our problems?
So I believe that there are some zonings that we should not have these in. Um, if, let me go back to um there. You know, when you're talking about like the commercial, the industrial, it should have never been in those areas. Even the university, I never, I don't understand why it's in the university uh zoning. Um, so then you're, if you take all of those out, then you're just left with the GR, right? And um in, what year was it, nine, twenty eighteen? Twenty eighteen, they did um a zone change from a GR to an SF. But when you do that, you're losing the other potential uses that can go in there. And our goal isn't to get rid of all of the other uses. Our goal is to make sure that mobile homes and manufacturer homes go into the proper zoning, which should be mobile homes and manufacturer homes. And those should be the categories that they're allowed. We're not excluding them completely from the city, we're just being more strategic.
Right, you're saying ME, MHE and MH?
Yes.
Are the best choi- I think I'm hearing you say.
Yes, MH and MHE would be the ones that we would want to keep them in.
Option two is kind of your thought.
Well, I want to be neutral.
You're not voting on it, but I hear.
I'm just giving you the the facts.
So like my dis- district's part of Second Street and we have an industrial district. These people consider everything behind there as an industrial district. Not residential housing, yet it's all residential. How does that, how can we change that?
So do you see the category that says SF one, SF two? So in those, all all of those should, we have to clean those up too, you know, because you're allowing them in those districts as well. That's why, remember how I said it's all of the above? This is how our zoning was pretty much written. Um, right now, as we're becoming more an urban city, you will see the mixtures of retail, you know, housing and all that. But those can be classified as a different type of zoning, like mixed use. Um, so our goal is to eventually hit all of them. It's just that um we have a lot still in the process of cleaning up a lot of other stuff. And this one, because as you can tell, it comes with a cost. Um, when you do this kind of change to the whole ordinance, now you have to let the whole city know about it.
Elizabeth, let me ask you this, in support of uh Councilman Mitchell's uh interesting concerns about the beautification of his.
District.
Certain areas of his district. What what is there now is there now.
Yes.
Under the current zoning. My question is, as a council, uh, do we have that opportunity to say, okay, any and all vacant lots in that area that Mr. Mitchell uh is concerned with, not to allow more mobile homes to be brought in? Can we as a council just make that a zoning change for that area alone?
So that would be option one.
Option.
Okay.
And I just want to say, we got builders. Now, they don't build five hundred at a time, but we have builders that are building now. And we got the, we got the lab to have that other land to continue building. Because we know they bought the land, some of it hadn't just been ready to go, but we building homes.
Yes.
And that's what we want to continue doing. But if you get somebody that puts a mobile home right quick, we can't build a home.
Yeah.
We don't build like Beating Bowl, whatever they are. But we got guys that are building homes.
Yes.
So.
And they would, they can.
Yeah.
Um, you even right now, they would be able to, you have that option of going into it, it's just which one do you want? And by us not addressing this, then we continue to see mobile homes throughout the whole city.
And I'm not asking nobody to move their mobile home.
No, and and they they can stay there.
Yeah, we're just gonna continue letting that go. Because I'm telling you, they just putting, just because there's a piece of dirt that they dropping mobile homes.
And I want to make that clear, for either option, option one or option two, all existing mobile homes or manufacturer homes, they would be considered legal nonconforming, so they can stay there. They're not, nobody needs to move out or anything like that.
We just want, I just want, we want people that I talk to, we just want to stop now.
Correct. So with option one and option two, one, you're just focusing on your, the the boundary that you gave us to look at. And option two is the whole city.
If Mr. Haney wants us to wait, we can sit and discuss if he wants to shut down a certain section of hills.
No, I don't think that.
I think he he's in agreeance.
I want to shut the empty lots down.
Yeah.
From being.
Yeah.
And one of, and one of my zoned areas is where they finna build a new courthouse. So if you stand up on the courthouse and look south, you're gonna see mobile homes. We don't want to see that if we trying to change our downtown area.
Wait, Chris. I got two questions. First, uh the uh travel trailer, fifth wheel, those kinds of things have not come up in this discussion. What does this do to those?
Separate ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are just homes on property.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have their grass set separately.
So that's next.
But I don't think you can do a fifth wheel inside the city, Nick.
Oh, I can.
You have to be a trailer, you have to be.
I can uh take you on a tour.
I'm just saying, I I don't know what they doing, I know you're not supposed to.
I can take you on a tour.
I give you the headline, though.
Yeah.
I think that's more of an enforcement issue than than anything.
Not this issue, right.
I just, I, they're on wheels too, I didn't know where they all counted. But uh curious, going back to kind of bringing development into areas that may have been ignored or or forgotten. You know, one of the things we had talked about were were like the neighborhood empowerment zones to be able to encourage development. And, you know, can we kind of put that on a list to to talk about at some point?
Sure. The the Henley subdivision that Mr. Mitchell mentioned was a a very good uh public-private partnership with the city owning the land and dedicating the land for the project. We helped some with the infrastructure and then a private developer came in and built that.
Yeah.
So that that worked well.
Gentlemen, any other questions? It seems to me, what I'm hearing from this council, Liz, is that we would probably like to do it citywide. So I think what you need to do is we can come back in, I would guess next week, twenty-eighth, I believe. Uh, maybe start the process and address it twenty, yeah, whatever date it is. Twenty-fifth. Come back in and and let's start the process with option two, I think, what I'm hearing this council consensus is, is that Eddie certainly wants it, but I think everybody else wants it just as well in their district. So I think come for, come forth with this uh on the next meeting with this on the agenda for action.
Okay.
Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds great.
Thank you very much for your great presentation.
You're welcome.
All right, gentlemen. Go to number four. Say, I'll move to adjourn. Say, second?
Second.
All favoring?